Welcome, everybody, to tonight's meeting. I'd like to call the regular Wausau School District Board meeting to order for Monday, July 8th, 2024. Miss Beck, if you can call. Roll.
Sarah Brock.
Yeah.
John Creacher. Pat McKee.
Here.
Jennifer Paoli. Joanna Reyes.
Here.
Jane Roche.
Here.
Cory Sillers.
Here.
Lance Trollop.
Here.
Jim Boucher.
Here. Please stand and recite the President's Legions.
Hi, President Legions, this is the way of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. And with that, do we have any speakers? Do not. We will continue to move on. Agenda item six, approving the consent agenda, appointments, separations, leaves of absence, retirements, minutes from the regular session of June 10th, 2024, and special session of June 24th, 2024. Payment of bills, budget, status, and investment report, and donations this month. Quick trip in American Online Giving Foundation. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude for donations to the district. Here we go. So moved. We got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number seven. At our Ed Ops meeting, we were presented to the, it was presented to the board, the designs and budget, and is asked to consider approval of the, these plans to be issued for bidding. The 95% complete designs are being shared for, were shared for Horace Mann Middle School, Montessori, and the board is being asked to consider approval for use in soliciting competitive bids. And that, I don't believe we have any additional items, so I'm gonna, I'm seeking a motion to approve the plan designs for Horace Mann Middle School and Montessori as presented to be issued for bidding. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number eight. At the June Education Operations Committee meeting, Mr. Bushman and Wausau Police Chief Matt Barnes presented the Wausau School District SRO program and potential contract renewal. Any additional items?
There are no.
There are not. I'm seeking a motion to accept the proposed SRO contract for three years, beginning July 1st, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item. At the June Education Operations Committee meeting, Kara Rakowsky, Julie Schell, and AK ELA vetting team shared a brief presentation on Frog Street Core Curricula, early learning resource. I presume there's no additional items, so I'm seeking a motion to adopt Frog Street as the 4K core resource with full implementation in the fall of 2024, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next agenda, next agenda item. At the June Education Operations Committee meeting, Ms. Schell, Dr. Caldwell, John Uding, and AGR principal shared brief update on the achievement gap reduction. That was a presentation that we had at that time. I'm gonna continue moving on to the next item. That'd be 8A4. At the June Education Operations Committee meeting, the multilingual department shared a brief presentation on an alternative pathway to graduation for SLIF students. To approve an alternative graduation pathway for multilingual learner SLIF students. Those are students that come that have been displaced and need to find a way to graduate, and that's a program which was presented. I don't believe there's anything to add. We'll continue. I'm seeking a motion to accept the alternative graduation pathway to graduation for SLIF students. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item. At the June Education Operations Committee meeting, the board was presented with the recommendation for the Wausau Activities Code Handbook. I believe there's no additional items. I'm seeking a motion for the approval of the Wausau Activities Code Handbook be renewed for the 2024-25 school year for Wausau West and Wausau East High School.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item. At the June Education Operations Committee meeting, administration presented proposed changes to the employee handbook for implementation in the 2024-25 school year. No additional? Okay. I'm seeking a motion for approval of the proposed changes to the employee handbook as presented for the 2024-25 school year.
So moved.
Okay. We got a motion, and then we got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. With one ab- abstents, chin, I will stress that word, one abstention. Okay. We'll move forward. Motion carries. Next item. At the June Education Operations Committee meeting, the board was presented with information related to the WIA renewal for the district. I believe there's no addition for that. It was pretty straightforward. I'm seeking a motion for approval of the WIA membership renewals for the middle school and high schools for the 2024-2025 school year.
So.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item 8B. Dr. Caldwell and Michelle will provide annual notice of the adoption of the Wisconsin Academic Standards by the Wausau School District. The Wisconsin Academic Standards outline the district's, the knowledge and skills the students should require, acquire, in each content area throughout their education. Standards also guidance for teachers during the development of their lesson plans and instructional practices, ensuring students are learning the skills they need. And I turn it over to you, ladies.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, and thanks for having us. Each year, annually, we are to give notice of the standards that we use in the school district to instruct our students and to portray what students should know and be able to do. So we have just a brief summary of the Wisconsin Academic Standards, which is what we do utilize here in the Wausau School District. Just for those who were unaware, the standards were created in 1998, and in 2015, Act 55 required us to give annual notice to the board and to parents on the standards that the district utilizes in everyday instruction in our classrooms. And the reason for that is, you can, as an LEA, create your own standards. You can adopt the Wisconsin standards. You can rewrite them. Many districts obviously lean on the expertise of those teacher committees who put together the standards as part of the standards review process through the DPI each year. So that's why we are required to give annual notice on what we are, we are using, just so you understand the why of why we're here tonight. The standards are on a, now, on a six-to-seven-year review cycle. So there's 22 content areas that cover K-12 instruction, and each one of those content areas is on now about a six-to-seven-year review cycle where teams of teachers come together across the state along with some expertise from the DPI, and they review the standards, look through the rigor, the relevance, and recently, our standards took a pretty, I would say, significant shift in that they became inquiry-based. So that, in the last probably six-to-seven-year cycle for math, ELAs, science, social studies, they're inquiry-based, which gets students into some deep critical thinking, problem-solving, and there are a lot around student and self-empowerment of their own learning. So it was a great shift. But those then cause us to have pause around what practices as teachers we're using in our classrooms and how we are providing the instruction for the rigor and relevance of what Wisconsin has asked us to have our students know and be able to do. So as a district, we want to ensure that all our students have equal opportunity to high-quality educational programs. So by adopting the Wisconsin State Standards, we set goals for teaching and learning. And as you can see, in our district, K-12, we have leadership teams and departments that unpack those standards, and then they identify those learning targets and learning outcomes. What do we want the students to know in the classroom and be able to do? They align the depth of knowledge with those assessments. So how do we assess our students based off of those standards? Discuss potential shifts in teacher practices. So like Mrs. Schell said, if it's inquiry-based, like, how do we change our teacher practices to ensure that those students are doing more hands-on, inquiry-based activities and learning? And then they align, the alignment to those curricular resources with the Wisconsin State Standards. So with that, we are asking that the board approves the Wisconsin Academic Standards for use in 24-25 school year.
So I'm, I'm seeking a motion to approve the Wisconsin Academic Standards for use in 2024-25 school year.
Second.
Questions? Are there questions from the board?
I've, I've got one, Jim, and this is, it probably was answered over the years, and I just forgot it. It's pretty specific to the financial literacy requirement, that I believe it's, it's a state requirement, and then we have several high school courses that meet that. Do you know why, in, in high school right now, a, an economics course satisfies the financial literacy requirement? It's just Econ 101, for lack of a better term. But AP Micro does not satisfy financial literacy. And when I read the course description, I did not get into deep content, so I have no idea where the differences are, but I, I just, I know of one personal example where a student did not take Econ, they took AP Micro instead. Not only passed AP Micro, but got a five on the AP exam, and now they essentially have to go backwards and take plain Econ to satisfy that financial literacy when they could be taking another course that is more robust, meaningful, what have you.
I honestly don't have the exact answer to that. It's a great question. I'm guessing my, my thought would be, my educated guess would be that because of the requirements of financial literacy in the standards, and some of that I know, because you can't, there is a true financial literacy course, and there is the Econ course.
Right.
And because my son took both, I know that there's a lot of similarities in the two courses in terms of the requirements for the standards of what students need to know and be able to. There's some self, like, financial literacy, there's, you know, they get into insurance and all those broader spectrums and elements around what financial literacy entails. So I'm wondering if it's just that maybe the one course didn't tick off all of the expectations that are needed to be met, but I don't know that for sure, so I don't want to say with full certainty.
No, that's, that's fine. And I was, I was thinking, maybe it was never looked at. Right? I mean, maybe it wasn't brought up, like, could this actually meet it? So could we take a look at it and identify?
That's a good question.
What, if anything, is missing? Because if, if there's nothing missing, you know, again, kids don't have to take a step back, so to speak, to satisfy that, that requirement.
That's a great question.
Or if there's one or two small things missing, you could add to it, and...
Right. Right.
Well, my question is, is this a DPI, whether they're gonna accept these classes or not decision, or is that our decision?
I believe that because this was a graduation requirement
Right.
on the state of Wisconsin, there are some pretty strict guidelines for what needs to be included in the course syllabus and content. So I'm, I'm wondering if, if, and I know that both Econ is a path that students can take, and it can also count as a social studies credit, as well as the financial literacy piece in and of itself as a course. So I'm guessing that there are just some expectations that weren't met because it's a DPI requirement for graduation with the one course that you're speaking of, but like I said, I don't know for certain, so we have to...
Well, it'd be interesting to find that out. I think, I think that's a great question, in fact, that, you know, I had, I'll say this, I had a lot of discussion with DPI with, why isn't this class accepted for this, taking on the standards, and they're covered over here, why not here? And sometimes it has to be just the question that is put out there for the DPI.
Because AP Micro is pretty intense, from what I saw. I mean, it's, it covers a lot. So, yeah, if you guys could just find all that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Great idea. Any other questions? Good question. All right. Well, with that, those are the questions. Motion's on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Administration will give a presentation, information related to the legally required Title IX adjustments that have been dealt us very, not too far, not too long ago. So we need to be looking at this. So with that, Miss Cundrum, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. And I'm gonna start off right away with an apology in terms of timeline, because literally five minutes before walking down here, I was still on the phone with the attorney on a couple of additional edits. So a couple of these documents that I'm gonna walk through have a couple minor tweaks from what I had previously loaded. So, starting off with the slide deck, which is very short, I just wanted to review two main pieces with the board, because this, this timeline in terms of our asking for this board policy approval for both 2264, which is a new policy, and 2266 revisions, has sort of come out of left field in terms of what we usually take for processing. So the Department of Education actually approved the amendments related to the Title IX regulations on April 17th. My understanding is that that was hundreds and hundreds of pages of information, which all of the attorneys, pretty much all across the country, dove into right away to figure out what does that mean with regard to all the policies that we had just implemented. As you may recall, if you were on the board last year, you remember, we just did a pretty extensive Title IX update. So June 13th, we received an email from Neola with the draft policy updates, which included drafting notes. It was 27 pages long for one of the policies and a number of changes to the current policy that we had. On the 17th, we got in contact with our attorney and set up a time to talk with her about that. I didn't include in here, we had that meeting the last week in June, I believe it was Monday or Tuesday of that week. Mikael and I were both on that meeting with our attorney Tess O'Brien. We have been working on the language and her recommendations of the options that were given to us, and literally just today, and as I said five minutes ago, I was able to do the final tweaks to those policies. So I have attached updated policies, but I left the ones that I uploaded previously on the slide presentation for the meeting, so you can see both. And I did highlight the slight changes between the two policies to make that easier, and we'll walk through that in just a moment. If you can switch to the next, thank you. I think it's important to also kind of give some highlights to what the main changes were with regard to the new policy because, or the, at least the amendments. As I said, and as you know, that, that Title IX policy was revised extensively last year. And since then, the Department of Education has been working on a variety of amendments, which they thought were gonna come out last fall, and then they thought they'd be out in the winter, and then they thought they'd be out in the spring, and we finally got them, like I said, late April. The couple, it's more than a couple, but the ma, the main adjustments is they broadened the definition of hostile work environment. So in terms of complaints that can come forward, that hostile work environment definition was broadened. We do have greater latitude than we previously had with regard to the grievance process and what that can look like. It expanded the obligation of the district to respond to complaints. So that then triggered two bullets down, I should have probably connected these two. We have to do annual training updates for all employees, not just those that are involved with the investigation process. It also adjusted the duties for the Title IX coordinator and others involved in the investigation. Last year, the new policy had very definitively duties that the Title IX coordinator had to do, and separate duties for the investigators, and separate duties for the decision-makers, and the appealing decision-makers. This has adjusted some of those and blended some of them, so that the coordinator can do an investigation or delegate that investigation to somebody else who's trained. There's a number of different modifications with those duties. The complaint that is received can be oral or written. In the past, it's had written, and so we always had to ask for that in writing, even though sometimes, oftentimes, those are delivered orally. It does not, and I wanted to make sure I hit this, it does not address in any of the amendments the aspect of athletics as it applies to Title IX. So there's no modifications to any of that at this time. I, I won't say never, because it's believed that there may be something coming on that too, but that's down the road whenever we get that. It does expand our supportive measures provisions, and so we talk regularly with anybody that has concerns about what supportive measures does the student or staff member need to be able to feel like they can productively be in our environment. So it expands what some of those can look like. It does mention that we have to designate one specific person having ultimate oversight to the process of the Title IX policy. And then it added some new obligations related to pregnancy and some specifics around both student aspect as well as staff aspect for situations that deal with pregnancy as, as a condition. So those are the big highlights. I can pause there in case there are some questions. If there are no questions, I'd like to go to the policy language itself, specifically the two I just most recently updated, because those would be the shifts from what I had loaded earlier. So if you can open Policy 2266 first, it's the last one I updated. This one's fairly minimal, other than what I had, you know, all of these other bullets, we, we made some modifications, the definition of what each role has to do, that sort of thing. That's mostly changed for 2264, which is the new policy. 2266 was the policy you approved for Title IX last summer, and that by and large stays exactly as it was. I did highlight in yellow two areas where the words were, there was a two-day limit in terms of response. It's not showing up as yellow for you, is it? There were two places on that policy that indicated that when a complaint is received, we have two days to make a response, and then there are two days before the next step needs to happen. And that was one of the issues that we sort of got hung up on with one of our, our processing situations within the last year or so. And nowhere in the regulations does it specify that two days is the time limit that needs to be used. And so the recommendation from the attorney was to modify the two days to say, within a reasonable time, and I can pull, I'll have to go into the actual document if the yellow's not highlighting. Can you do a search? It probably won't work. Hold on a second. I wasn't, I wasn't planning that that was not going to work, so I thought the highlights were gonna show up. They showed up when I looked at them.
So the biggest problem is with two days, because that's in our policy, we have to make sure it's followed, otherwise, we're out of compliance, correct?
Correct.
So what the, the attorney is saying is, don't put two days, because normally, for any kind of a complaint, we don't have to respond within two days. It's usually five, or 10, or something like that. It seems rather random, whoever made that selection stated that it would be two days.
Right. And that's exactly what she said. Two days was the recommendation that was provided when we first adopted this policy from Neola's template. And actually, that has been a trip for pretty much every district that's run into circumstances that they have had complaints lodged, because as a good example, I, I was out for the last week and a half because my daughter got married and I had some time away. If something had happened, I was unavailable within a two-day timeframe. It's just not feasible that a person, especially when they're naming a person as the coordinator, that that person is for sure gonna be available every single day of the year throughout the timeframe. There's the highlight. So, although what's highlighted is respond. I did a search on respond. Oh, sure. Okay. Promptly. No, promptly. So the recommendation from the attorney was to change the word, change the timeline from two days to promptly after. And so in, in the first paragraph, where I guess promptly is in there, and other spaces too, the paragraph talks about, once an allegation or a complaint has come forward, that the Title IX coordinator has two days from learning the information or receiving the report. And she requested that we change it to promptly after learning and take out the two days. So I made that adjustment. That paragraph starts with, because the board is considered to have, and it doesn't give pagination. So the second place was later in that same paragraph, there was a parentheses that indicated the same two-day timeline, and so in relation to that change, the parentheses with the two-day example was removed. That's the only change that we made on this policy beyond what was needing to be made to adjust the, the details of the roles and such. So, so that is what we're asking for us to update for regard to the 2266, which is the current policy that we have. This policy will continue to stay in place and apply to any complaints that originated in terms of the date that they occurred prior to August 1st of 2024. So we do need to maintain the policy, and anything that comes forward that allegedly happened prior to August 1st, we have to follow the rules in Policy 2266. If the allegation of events happens August 1st or after, that's when Policy 2264 takes place. So essentially, they, like, grandfathered, if you will, the, the old policy to apply to prior events from the change, and then Policy 2264, which is a separate attachment, is a new policy, and that spells out the changes that we went through on that PowerPoint. So I can go through those pieces if you'd like, although, again, they are two, it is essentially the same as what was loaded, with the exception of what was highlighted, which you can't see, and I'm not quite sure how to get that. One of the pieces was, there's a lot of, in the drafts, when we receive them, there's a lot of language that is drafting notes. The attorneys put paragraphs and paragraphs and pages of drafting notes into the proposals that they bring us. At the very, very top of Policy 2266, the second paragraph there just specifies that 2266 is for items that happened before August 1st, 2264 is for items that happen after. And we, I, also... And we, I, also mistakenly understood that that was part of the drafting note. So I had previously struck that paragraph. It is not part of the drafting note, which was unclear. So that second paragraph of that policy was put back in. The next item that was highlighted yellow was a paragraph that was struck. And it is just ahead of. I'm on 2264. I made the shift. Thank you. And if you can search on adding allegations. To get us to the right space. Yep, right there. So on that, I just below that, scroll down, there's an investigation section. And then there's a part that says determination of whether sex discrimination occurred, right there. You'll see a paragraph that was struck out. This item, after further review, Attorney O'Brien indicated that this language really should not be included. She would not recommend it. It is not something that is required as part of the amended rules. And her recommendation would be to not add things to the policy that wasn't already included or required within those amendments. And then a little bit further down, there's a section called Parties Provided a Reasonable and Equal Opportunity to Make a Statement in Support of or Challenging the Determination. That paragraph that follows is a slight modification to the prior option that had been selected. Essentially, it allows both parties the same five days in the same, like, the calendar will count the exact same way for both parties to submit information to the appeal decision maker for them to consider. Prior to that, it was five days and then another five days. And there was information that needed to be shared. Again, those are things that are not necessarily spelled out or required within the amendments. So this option was the one that was just updated. And then just a little bit down from there, there's a section that says for students with a sentence and another one for employees, right there. Thank you, Cassie. In these two sections, in the prior draft, there were a bulleted list of a number of things. And the bulleted lists were intended to be representative examples. However, because of the way that they were written, they appear that they are the only options that can be chosen. And so as a result of that, the language that I was provided just less than an hour ago was suspension, expulsion, and/or other discipline allowed by the Student Code of Conduct, Board Policy, or state or federal law. And for employees, it includes the employee handbook, Board Policy, and state or federal law. So in essence, instead of giving a limited list that might be misleading to people to really specify, it's within the scope of these components and documents that govern what options we have for sanctions and remedies. It's a little more all-inclusive. So again, I know this feels likely to you the same way it feels to us, which is fast and without a lot of time for us to slow down and process through. We feel that too. And we do need to have a policy in place by August 1st. The regulations and the information connected to the Title IX policy don't specify that I could find what happens if we don't. But it does say in the introduction that this policy is required in exchange for federal funding that is provided for education for all school districts across the country, which would make it seem like that's a possible penalty. But nowhere in the information from an update standpoint did they specify that. So to be in compliance, we're supposed to have an approved policy with these revisions no later than August 1st when they commence.
And that be the reason why we're hearing this tonight?
Correct.
And having to move relatively quickly. I guess I, you answered the question. My one question would have been, what's the consequence if we don't have something in place by August 1st? I don't know if you want to play with that game. And if it's not, if it's just terminology, I'm not seeing a problem with this.
Well, I came into the meeting thinking this was just an update from Neola. We were adopting Neola's recommendations. And in fact, I saw in our email that we get from other districts that another district just did the same thing. But now I'm, so I was just playing, okay, this is our normal update. I read through it. But now I'm hearing that that you've consulted with a different attorney who has a different opinion than the Neola attorneys. And so all kinds of options were either picked or not picked or changed. And I have no way to evaluate that based on your reading through it you just did right now without seeing the policy as we normally do, which see the Neola drafting notes and why they recommend this and what the options are. Or our own attorney saying this is why I would recommend you go away from the Neola language, which we always are a little hesitant to do because it's hard to track and we lose their protection. And so maybe if I had all of that, it would all be fine. But I don't have all that. So I, maybe it's just the attorney in me, but I can't review the policy the way we just did.
I understand.
I had a question too about the two days. It says two days of the coordinator's receipt. Now, if the coordinator is on vacation, they aren't gonna receive it until they get back.
The complaint is deemed received as soon as it is received by any administrator in the school district, which is what came up in our prior situation. Because the administrator received information and it didn't get shared to the coordinator within the two days. So the coordinator was unable to respond within the two days specified by the policy. So the way, the way the law works, it's deemed received as soon as it is heard. And with the new provision, it's deemed received as soon as it's heard by any employee, which is why we have to train all employees with regard to that item. So, yeah, it's pretty complex.
I'm uncomfortable going away from Neola as much as I hate to say that just because, I mean, it's happening so fast.
I think we could certainly bring back some information connected to that. Tess O'Brien works for the same firm that provides the legal guidance to Neola. It is one of her partners. And they've had multiple conversations about these pieces. I think it might also be important for people to know that a number of states have filed an appeal against the modifications that have come forward. Wisconsin is not one of those states at this point. And that's why we're in the position of trying to accommodate the August 1st timeline. Most often, when we have policy updates, we take quite a bit of time and we review them pretty thoroughly. Not that we didn't do that. It's just it feels rushed because we're talking about a, you know, 20-ish page policy, which feels like a lot. And it is. But that has to do with some of the timeline.
Why, so I feel like I have a gun to my head. Pass this or else by August 1st. So if we pass this as is under the assumption that we were still going to take time and review it during our normal, or not during, in the normal way that we do, couldn't we amend it if and when needed after August 1st?
You certainly could. You can amend a policy whenever you choose.
So if we have to have this because we don't want to play the what-if game, pass this for August 1st and then go through all the
Go back through and take the time through the two-step process.
Right. And whether it's in September or whenever, then we have an opportunity to digest it, get more of that information and make any amendments, if any, at that point in time.
Can we work with Neola to maybe get them on board with our ideas?
I think so.
And I'd suggest that that's a good recommendation. One of the things that's going to happen is the regulations are going into effect August 1st, no matter what we do. And so we'll be out of compliance unless we take their recommendations put into play. It doesn't mean that we can't look at it two weeks after that to say, does it, does it fit where we want to be and make some amendments at that point if we chose to?
I have found that you don't want to play games. And if we can, and we can, change that policy later when we go through the process, I think that's something we have to do.
When did Neola send this, pardon me?
It was sent by email on June 13th. So I got it later that day or the next day. And then we reached out to Tess for a consult on that on the 17th. So.
And it seems like a lot of districts right now are struggling with this as well, if I'm not mistaken.
Absolutely. I think there are, there are a few that I know of that have actually acted on the policy based on the options that they selected. I would say the grand majority of districts probably have not yet. And it's probably on their July agenda somewhere. I know some districts don't meet until next week or the week after. So it will likely be a piece that everybody will have to wrangle with a little bit here. Correct.
Lance, you made the comment before. You like to go through a process. You want to elaborate a little bit more on that?
Well, my preference would have been, it sounds like we're doing it sort of the opposite of what I would have preferred. I would have preferred that we just approve tonight the Neola policy. And then if we have outside or our own attorneys, somebody different from Neola recommending changes to the Neola policy, that we then look at that in August or September. And we consider, why do they think we should make these changes? Why does Neola think it should be this way? So that we are passing what is in compliance with Neola, which 90-something percent of our policies are worked for at Neola. We try to avoid making those changes. So we're kind of doing it in a way that's backwards to me. We're just being asked to just accept the changes to Neola without actually knowing why Neola wants those, that language in there to begin with.
If that is the board's collective perspective, you could choose to do it that way because the two that I uploaded originally were completely the Neola language with the options that Neola gave us, absent the fact that there was one change to option two instead of option one. But I think if our commitment is to approve what I had previously uploaded on, it's dated July 5th on here. If the board were to act on those two policies, we could come back to your next meeting, could be August even, and go through all of the red line pieces and the further modifications between Neola's option and this. And perhaps Neola would even agree to the modification of the language. That would be a piece that we could follow up with them on. It does not. So that would still hold. But again, if that goes through and we're gonna re-review, I would just be bringing back that timeline change for future discussion. And we could do that at that time. We currently have the two-day piece. So it's there now. I think I'm probably less concerned that we're gonna get a complaint right now in the middle of summer. That's not to say that we couldn't or that we won't. I should have probably not even said that. I should knock on wood that this is, yeah. So I think that's totally a viable option. And if that's the preference of the board, those policies would be represented in what I had uploaded for version one that are dated July 5th.
Well, I think we've already stated we don't want to be out of compliance and play that game. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we have time to look at everything. So what would be your motion on this then? That you would suggest?
And I just, just to throw in, it's okay either way, I guess, with me as long as I'm being told right now that this is coming back in August with the normal red lines that we normally get. Otherwise, I don't want to put my yes vote to a policy that I'm right now saying I don't know if I accept it or not. And then it doesn't come back in August and I can't do anything about that. I'm one board member. I can't make it beyond the agenda.
But it's a very good suggestion. I mean, if we can come back to it right away to really evaluate it the way we normally evaluate policies, then we could move forward.
And if there's modifications you'd prefer to make at that time, we could go to those modifications based on that review. Because that's easily enough to do.
You get to speak it into me. So if it's, if it's coming back in August, then I'm okay with it tonight.
Well, that's an additional that we don't have to put into the motion. The motion would be as written, seeking a motion to approve the updated Title IX policy language for the time being. And then we come back knowing that we are going to do that administratively.
And I think that the only insertion that you would need in that motion is that you're going to approve the policy drafts that were loaded on either July 5th, which were just the straight Neola options, or the July 8th, which is our attorney's modified recommendations in a couple of areas.
Like I say to my wife many times, what do I want to eat? Don't give me a lot of choices. Just give me one thing and I'll be fine.
So my preference would be then that we probably move forward with the July 8th recommendations because I think that those have been pretty well thought out and discussed amongst the attorneys. But I completely can bring back that red line version that shows each and every word that was changed and why. And we can also provide the legal information as background as to why those modified changes were made.
What if you make amendments that puts us back out of compliance? Later. Are you gonna offer any amendments that would put us back out of compliance? Since we don't really know what the changes are totally now?
Well, your question is exactly the concern that I have. So we pay Neola to provide us with policies that are meant to be in compliance with the change in the law. But now we have recommendations to go away from the Neola language. So I would just like to see why we're being recommended to go away from the Neola language and assure myself that I think we're still in compliance and that the board all agrees that we think this is a good thing to go away from it. But like I said, as long as, as long as it's coming back in August with the normal line, red lines, and we can see both, I'm okay with it tonight just to have something in place for the next month.
For August 1st.
Yeah, whatever our meeting is in August. Yeah.
And I think that's
Why don't we have the motion be that we're accepting the Neola July 5th ones?
Yeah, either one's fine with me.
That would be my recommendation too.
Okay.
July 5th.
Hear that?
Okay. Well, then with that, seeking a motion to approve the updated Title IX policy language that was given to us on July 5th with the idea that we will come back to this policy in the month of August.
Agreed. I will make that motion.
Second.
Any further questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And I think you're continuing on with the next agenda item. Administration will share information related to substitute management service providers and recommendation for contract approval.
That is correct. So this topic, I know, has some history tied to it. And for some of you, you may remember some of that history. For some of you, you will not. So I wanted to include a quick update on what the historical review has been or is. Wausau School District previously outsourced the substitute management process for the 2019-20 school year. It was a one-year process. It was outsourced to a company that was home-based in Weston. And we brought that process back in-house for the 2021 school year. I transitioned into the district in the summer of 2020. So I didn't, I wasn't sitting here or experiencing anything that So I didn't, I wasn't sitting here or experiencing anything that occurred during that process. But I did ask a lot of questions because I came from a district who had worked with an outside contract management company for about twelve or fifteen years, very, very successfully. And so I was very curious about why we had concerns and what, what trips, um, did we run into in the process of that here? It's my understanding that we had a number of payroll issues. We had a number of administrative issues. We had a number of communication issues. And I know that those are really, really big umbrella, um, topics. And there's a lot more detail connected to that. Um, but when I, when I dug into a little bit more of that, the payroll process, um, as I understand it, originated in large part because they were trying to fit a school district substitute payroll process, which is quite unique, into a payroll system that was not designed or set up appropriately to be able to support such a, such a process. Um, and it sounds like there were a number of things that got dropped in terms of communication. Um, information that the district thought was going to happen that didn't. Um, and when follow-up was happening, not getting necessarily clear answers. That's what I was told when I did some research around that. Um, so overall, there was very low satisfaction. Um, there was a perception that there was a very low level of service and responsiveness from the company. So what has changed? And why am I here and being brave enough four years later to sit in front of you and talk about why I would like to try this opportunity again? Um, I think it has been a continual assessment of our workload and efficiencies. Every time I've brought handbook changes forward, I've talked to you about our, our efforts to try to bring a better efficiency to our process, to our procedures, um, to what we offer, um, and how we offer it. So that's another reason. We do have some shifting of responsibilities within departments based on the recent reductions, specifically here at Longfellow. Um, and some of the other pieces that have been done in, in departments are shifting around between people, but also between departments a little bit to make sure that we can continue to provide a really high level of service with less bodies to cover the work. And that is something that I think is a good thing for us to always do. Um, I think that if we change the vendors that we are considering, which I very strategically did when I asked for quotes for the process, um, it can make quite a difference. And I think the strong experience and background that I specifically have working with contract management vendors gives me maybe a little bit different lens of how to look at, assess and, um, hold vendors accountable for things that they have said that they will and or can do. Um, and I would not bring you a recommendation that I didn't feel a hundred percent confident in, in them being able to deliver what it is that we need. Um, so I specifically asked for, for quotes from three vendors that provide, um, this particular service over, um, over a, a wide swath across the nation, multiple states, multiple regions. Um, because I felt like we need that level of professionalism and that level of dedication to the education industry to make that successful. Um, if you can go to the next slide, thank you. Um, I also wanted to emphasize what stays the same with this proposal. And I'll talk about what also changes. Um, but what stays the same is a lot. Um, the pay rates are still set by the Wausau School District. Frontline is still the system that we would use for placements. Not only is it still the system, but we still own the system and we still own all of the history with the recommendation that I'm making. And that is different than with any of the other quotes and vendors that I spoke with. Our current subs all will be on-boarded to the new vendor. I know what that process looks like. I'm comfortable with it and my staff is comfortable also being able to support that with, in conjunction with a new vendor if this is approved. Payroll continues to be every other week. So there's no change in the timing of those payroll processes for our substitute staff. We would have an onsite coordinator. The vendor will hire somebody locally and we have a voice in who that person is that could provide that and will provide that onsite support here at Longfellow. One of the obligations within the contract would be that we provide a workspace for that person to work in. And that would be somewhere in or approximate to the human resources department so that we can have good communication. And we'll say that is a game changer that all three of the vendors that I sought quotes from provide that the prior vendor did not provide. And I think that would clear up a significant portion of the miscommunication and, um, administrative issues that were encountered the last time around. The pre-arranged and preferred substitutes all stay in place. In fact, whatever's in the system continues because the system again is the same system we have. There's no change in the system and no change in ownership of that data. And that means preferences that subs have in for job placements are still in place. And we would continue to work with subs on that process. So a lot stays the same. If we look at what changes, um, a couple of things that you're going to notice on this, I think are actually enhancements. Um, and I think when our substitutes experience it, they might see that as the same thing. Professional development would come from the vendor. I've seen the list and the, and the information that they provide. They are approved from DPI, um, in, um, the professional development that they provide particularly for substitute permit holders. Um, and that's a pretty rigorous process with DPI. Um, WSD would be able to partner and participate in, um, those trainings at times as well where it makes sense. Things like safety and security protocols. Um, the payroll obviously would come from their new employer instead of the school district. So the vendor would be the one issuing the payroll. It's just a matter of who's on that signature part of the check from that standpoint. Retirement shifts from, um, a WRS employer, um, or does WRS participating employer to a private employer, which means retirement would shift to a 401K process that they offer. Um, this is a significant game changer for a couple of things. Right now, we hire a number of our retirees from retired teachers. And if they are employed with another WRS eligible, um, employer, they have limitations as to how many hours that they can actually work in a given year before they cap out. And so we had an example earlier this year where we had a retired teacher who was working and had some assignments that went out quite a ways. And she really wanted to work a lot and she was working almost every day. She hit her limit as to how many days she could work for us for the calendar, for the fiscal year in like February. And she had to make a choice of, do you want to continue subbing? Cause if you do, you have to waive off and forego your annuity payment from WRS. And you're back to being a contributing WRS member and only getting the pay coming in from your substitute work. This particular sub made the decision, she was going to do that. And so she gave up her retirement pension so that she could continue to work in the classroom. Under this arrangement, she would not have had to do that because she wouldn't have been subject to the same restrictions in terms of the number of hours that she would work in a given year. Um, so that would change things. We have a number of substitutes who hit that limit of hours every year. And this would be one way around that process to allow our subs to work more, should they choose to do that. Um, not all subs want to work that much, but some do. Um, and we would love it if they could, um, when they want to. They would also gain access to being able to buy into a medical plan um, that the vendor offers to all of their substitutes across the country. Um, it allows them access to things like, um, office visits for a certain dollar amount, um, preventative visits, um, urgent care kind of visits, that sort of thing, as well as, uh, medical prescriptions. They do not have access to our medical plan if they are subbing for us. So it opens up the door to something that for some people is an important consideration. Um, and then obviously their employer changes, as I mentioned. And I felt like I really needed to specify that again. Their employer would be the new vendor, um, rather than Wausau School District. On the next slide, um, I wanted to talk a little bit about how is the school district impacted? Um, because we are impacted in that process too. Good and bad. Um, I guess maybe depending upon how people are looking at it. Um, we would no longer have to pay the substitute payroll, obviously. So that saves us from a budget standpoint for FICA and for our WRS payments that we make right now for employees. We would not have to be covering the workers' comp and we would not be covering unemployment insurance because they would no longer be our employees. Those insurance pieces and requirements by law shift to the new employer. We do however, pay a percentage markup, um, for the services. And that percentage markup covers things like the FICA that we're saving WRS. So yes, it's sort of like shifting money. Instead of paying it through payroll, we would pay it through, um, the accounts payable kind of process because it would be invoiced to us. Um, we get quite a bit of time, um, that currently is spent on substitute specific needs um, to be able to have that work turn to other things that need attention. Um, payroll spends quite a bit of time working through that, that payroll process for our substitutes. Um, in my team, I've got one staff member who this is supposed to be really part of her job. But during the school year, it's all-consuming and just about everything for her. Um, so other work that she's supposed to do oftentimes puts her in danger or above overtime limits. And those are things that I'm trying to manage as well. So it would allow us with the reduction of the employee relations position that's coming when Tammy retires in October, it allows us to repurpose our staff, um, a bit more. While we're also taking on management of another system in the district. Um, and there is an anticipated increase in this number of substitutes as well as the fill rates. Because, um, they can use some economy of scale with their advertising and their process and duplicate that or replicate that across multiple, um, multiple districts, multiple states even. And it is just much more reasonable for them to be able to do that from an economy of scale standpoint. Um, the next slide, um, I talk a little bit about the process that we used. So, um, according to board policy, we are required to seek out quotes. And I sought out quotes from three solid vendors. Um, they all could do this job. I, I will sit here and, and affirm to you that I think every single one of the vendors that provided a quote could do this job and could do it very well for us. Um, however, I did go through a review of costs, review of their process, review of the details that they brought forward. And I completed references in terms of calling a variety of districts that are currently using and or have shifted to this vendor from other vendors. And my recommendation to the board would be to consider approving a contract with Edge Staff for substitute management services effective with the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. There is a neighboring district, um, to us that I believe is going to be hearing a similar, um, recommendation at their meeting next week. I don't know if that's publicized yet, so I'm going to pause without saying which district that is. Um, but with the anticipation that both districts go that direction, I think it would be, um, even more of an economy of scale and even better for us because we already share a number of substitutes with that school district.
Any questions from board members?
Kevin, if you mentioned you, um, that's referencing districts, would you talk to any of the actual substitutes?
I did, I did not talk to any of the actual substitutes. I spoke with their HR team about billing, about administrative and about just general feedback that they have received. So that's a great question, but no, I did not.
Jim, I've, I've got a few, um, and I was one of the lucky or unlucky ones who sat through the previous, before you, you got here.
Yeah.
Um, and this is no statement on you, but I recall the presentation being very, very similar um, to what this one is. And so having said that, the biggest question I have is I have not heard since it's been in-sourced again in twenty-one, I think it was, I've not heard one complaint. So why, why are we, what is driving this desire to want to outsource this?
I think the reality is managing it in-house, um, doesn't provide efficiencies of, for us to be able to get all of the things that are expected of us completed. And I also think we, we regularly get questions like, can I buy into health insurance? Can I, you know, I would like to keep working more hours, but I can't because I'm up against my limit, those sorts of things. So at a time when we are struggling to get enough substitutes and to be able to keep them working, to have to say no in some of those circumstances and then lose people, I, I'd like to be able to, to give them an opportunity to be able to tap into some of those options.
So how often does that happen?
A handful or two a year, um, which seems like not a lot. But that handful or two of people make quite a bit of difference if they're willing to work on an almost daily basis when we have needs.
Can you use a vendor for just that group?
No, because it would just be, it, it wouldn't, the cost piece that we've got for a quote from the vendors, I don't think would be nearly that when it would be such a small number.
Okay, so and that's the next question is what, what is the financial impact of this? Versus current state versus what it is if we were to go this route?
Correct. So the markup that would happen would be, it'd be basically our payroll cost in terms of gross pay that we have. And then they would add a twenty-six and a half percent markup to that dollar amount. That covers the WRS, that covers all of those insurance pieces, the things that we just essentially are, are shifting. So we'd have a reduction in budget there. And then we'd have efficiency gains in terms of the other work that we're picking up because of the reduction of Tammy Bence's position and other positions within, within Longfellow. As you'll recall, we, we reduced an LAT member, so we're redistributing some of those duties. Some of that is coming to us.
We reduced in a lot of areas and we didn't go out and hire vendors to support that work in those areas that were reduced.
Understood.
So, and, and I guess back to my question on cost, what does it cost us today to manage substitutes? Versus what will it cost us tomorrow through this avenue?
So right now, it's the salary and benefits for essentially one full-time person year-round in my team. So that's probably ballpark about seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, we also have the WRS and the FICA percentages. So probably roughly around thirteen percent, I would say, cause not all are WRS eligible. Um, so thirteen percent of all of our current payroll costs. Um, and then in addition, we have time that I spend, time that Tammy spends and time that our principals spend when we are working with substitutes on complaints, concerns, investigations, all of those things. So those times would be able to be shifted to other things. It's not a direct dollar savings. It is an efficiency of the work that we are performing.
You're talking about opportunity cost, which comes down to what is the priorities that you guys have? And I would argue that payroll and staffing are two core functions to keeping the district running. And one of the tenets that I tend to live by in my day job, and because we deal with vendors all day, every day, you don't outsource things that are critical to customer. And in this example, our customers are the substitutes and they're kids, right? And I know I'm, I'm preaching to the choir here, but. And I know I'm, I'm preaching to the choir here, but when you start to do that and you lose control, because we saw it before, all hell breaks loose. And the same promise of increased staff and increased fill rates and all that, it, it never came to fruition. And as I did a, and this may be on all of these types of vendors, I don't know them well enough, but I did a quick search on, on Edge of Staff. If you look at the reviews that they have from substitutes, which I think was a great question, um, it's middle of the road at best. And the other interesting thing is that the reviews were better six years ago than they are in the last nine months. So all of those things together, I, I'm sorry, I, I cannot get behind, it's not, it has nothing to do with Edge of Staff, but just this concept in general. A, I think the costs are going to be multiple of your 75,000 that you're spending on the FTE today versus that, whatever that delta is, that 13%. I, that's gotta be over, I mean, that's in the millions. It, it has to be.
I don't have that right in front of me.
So that'll, that would be beneficial to know because 13% of overall FICA and Medicare.
No Wisconsin retirement system.
Wisconsin retirement, that, that's, that's in the million, it has to be in the million.
Just on subs though. Yeah, but just on that point of cost, sorry to interrupt, but just going on that same point, because you mentioned the current cost of a full-time employee, but that, that full-time employee isn't, that cost isn't going away, right?
Correct.
You're not, you're not suggesting that we replace this full-time employee with, so we'd still have that full-time employee plus whatever, whatever.
We would.
Roughly 13% of our subpay is.
We would still have the cost for our staff member, that is correct.
And the, and the extra cost you're estimating is about 13%. Cause about 13% of it covers what we're already paying for, you know, every, you know, all the stuff we talked about.
Correct.
And about 13% of it is rate straight to the vendor for managing it, handling it.
Right.
But we don't know what that equals.
I would have to get that from the business office specifically.
How, how do we, like, what is, what do you expect us to be paying a month to the vendor?
The 26 and a half percent added to the daily rate.
Dollar wise.
That'll vary month to month based on how many requests we have, Pat. I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not being disrespectful in any way. I just don't have that number to be able to give you.
So just for future, and this would be for any vendor, you, we have to know, I'll speak for myself, I have to know what is the delta in the finances.
Yep.
That's like job one, because we know the situation that we're in.
And we can certainly bring that back to the board for conversation.
That, yeah, that would be helpful.
Is this something we could address with a part-time hire? That would help your employee that's doing this and not getting your other job done?
Could that happen? Yes, although the reductions that we made were brought forward based on our budget scenario and where we are at. And so I don't perceive that it's an option to continue that position.
But we would spend all kinds of money outsourcing.
Tabitha? I, I think it might be more helpful for me to bring the numbers back because the numbers are not, I don't think as dire as, as the worry. But it's a fair question and we can certainly bring that back.
If I'm understanding, and, and obviously as you're, as you've said a couple of times, the number of substitutes per month differ per month based on the need. And so then when we're talking about an apples to apples change, obviously the cost that we pay a vendor is going to change month to month based on the number of substitutes we need that month.
Correct.
It might be helpful to look at the last couple of, maybe the last year and get a handle on how many subs did we do? And that might help given apples to apples for, for some people with those questions.
For sure.
The questions that I would have are, are more, I would love to know how some of our regular substitutes would feel about having access to the health insurance, changing from the WRS to a 401k, hearing from the people on the bond. And those people are going to tell us what they think and that's something we should consider. The other thing I, I'm noticing also looking at the reviews, um, for Edge of Staff online, where there are complaints, they seem to have to do with how they feel when there is an issue. Not necessarily a payroll issue, but a, a concern with administration or a student issue or something else in the classroom because they're not school district employees. What is the policy and, I feel like I'm getting weird feedback today. What is the policy and process that's into play for that? So we can make sure we're protecting them, um, as well as our district as a whole. Those would be the questions that, that I would be interested in and Edge of Staff should be able to answer that pretty easily.
I would think, so, yes.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to make a comment, uh, not from the financial aspect, but I think you guys will remember I was in favor of this from an administrative point of view because it's very difficult to get, uh, substitutes. And to find substitutes, especially at the last minute is very difficult as well. And I, I remember very clearly how difficult it was with my assistant to find subs at that last minute. I'm on, I'm kind of neutral right now because we saw a, a situation which did not fulfill what we weren't really wanted. We didn't have people working with our substitute teachers in a cordial fashion. We lost a lot of substitutes after that year because they didn't want to work with the company that we had brought onboard. They actually, we had to recover from that with all the other things that we were recovering from. We had to recover from that bad situation. The positive side, and again, I'm staying away from the financial right now, just to give you from a personal point of view as a substitute teacher, I know what I'm talking about. You've got to create relationships with your substitute teachers and sometimes a third party doesn't do as good a job creating relationships with the substitute teachers to keep the substitute teachers coming back to the same schools and things of that fashion. So I'm a little leery as I go into this and you and I've talked about that. But yet at the same time, to have a teacher that retires and is able to come back and sub for a whole year without having to stop their, their money coming in.
Right.
That's a big thing because they're limited based on days before, now it's on hours. And, and that's a, a different situation. So you, we lose a substitute teacher mid, mid-year. That's a tough situation. And then to have her stop her income coming in from her retirement, but yet she still wants, I mean, there's just a lot of those types of things that the benefit of that third party. But I'm just a little concerned about, are they going to create the relationship with our substitute teachers? I don't know. So I'm just kind of throwing that out there for you to think about.
I have one suggestion or, sorry, one suggestion or just an idea is I wonder if we're a, a year early on this. And the reason I say that is because if, if we don't go forward with an operational referendum, or if we go forward with one and it fails, we're going to be cutting millions next year, which means we're cutting lots of staff members next year. Which probably will mean some administrative staff as well. I would hate to spend money on this, have all our subs changed and then drop it next year, y- y- after only one year. Also, if we have to cut, you know, a dozen teachers next year, um, because we have to, you know, save millions of dollars, then there's going to be less payroll for payroll to do less, you know, less classes to fill, so less subbing to do, less need to have something like this. So I, I just, in addition to wanting to know what that 13% is, I'm, I'm leaning towards thinking we're a year away from being able to make this decision, um, because we don't know what's going to happen with that budget next year.
And I have a suggestion. Since the, um, WRS and the 401k thing is an issue, maybe we as a board need to put a resolution together to send down to our delegate assembly to try and get that changed.
Good point.
So that's a, that's a, that's in state statute, that's a DPI thing?
It is. The WRS, um, requirements and rules connected to reemployment post-retirement are governed in the statutes. And they've made some modifications to that over time. But I don't think they've made significant headway on that despite SAA's efforts in lobbying. So.
At this point in time, no, there hasn't been. And then the directors would be able to push something like this, which we've done in the last four years, pushing to do something with the legislature to, you know, maybe back off a little bit because we always keep on talking, we can't find subs, can't find teachers, can't find administrators, things of that fashion. But I, Lance brings a, a, a good point. If we're going to be in a tough situation, is this the right time to bring this on? Or do we wait and take a look at things based on the fact, I appreciate you putting a lot of work into this, trying to look at things for the benefit of finding substitute teachers and things of that fashion. But at the same time, maybe it's not the timing at this time.
Well, I think it's also beneficial to let a, uh, neighboring district perhaps pass this unanimously, let them go forward. I suspect it'll help our sub fill rate next year and then we can see where we're at.
I put the questions out there because I wanted to do that first before I put a motion. So there is no motion on, on the table right now. This has been more discussion. Does this give you more information?
It does.
My other question is, is since you're, um, suggesting this and even if Lance's, you know, the third, whatever the 13% is of the 26, it definitely seems like it's going to cost more at some point. Is this coming out of a different pot of money? That it's going to not affect our budget?
It comes out of, um, out of the budget, but it comes out of more vendor payments versus payroll expenses, which continue to go up. I mean, it goes up, but it, it goes up a little differently. So in terms of those salaries, because substitute salaries aren't necessarily adjusted every single year, it's based on comparables and they run off schedule. So.
So moving things along here, um, I would, I would suggest that, uh, we postpone this and put it down. We can always bring this back at a different time, but with a postponement, um, I'm going to, uh, put a motion on the table to postpone this, uh, item, uh, the substitute management system, uh, to a later date. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving right along. Are there any comments from the board pertaining to professional growth and development for the past month? Any comments? Seeing no comments, hearing no comments. I'm going to jump to Mr. Sellers. Uh, we'll deliver a legislative liaison update, nothing or something?
No, I, I don't have anything new that pertains to what we're working on.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Mr. Bushman, do you have a comment?
I'll keep it very brief. I just want to extend a public thank you to the school board. This is my first school board meeting, um, so I'm very excited to work alongside you in this next year, along with our staff and community and students and parents, um, to make Wausau fantastic. So thank you so much.
Welcome aboard, welcome aboard. All right, at this point in time, I don't have anything except for the fact that I'd put the board member liaison district activity report and ask that this is, report is entered in the official record. And with that, I'm looking at, I'm moving to closed session, uh, dealing with consultation with legal counsel regarding potential litigation, 19.85. I'm seeking a motion to go into close and that would then be a roll call.
So moved.
Sarah Brock, Pat McKee.
Yes.
Jennifer Paoli, Joanna Reyes, Jane Rouge, Corey Sellers.
Yes.
Lance Trollope.
Yes.
Jim Boucher.
Yes, thank you very much. And we'll go to close.